I was about to say that you're the rainbow this morning.
Recording in progress.
Okay, let's go. Well, the order now ladies and gentlemen, trust this is now eleven A M, July twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, calling to order, wanting to order the regular. Meeting of the Board of Trustees of Bohan Academy Charter School. Um, I'd like to have an attendance by all trustees, trustee Avla, I.
I.
Wayo Valas, I, Rosa Nicholas. Okay, um, for the record trustee, uh. Uh, Arquesa will be coming in a little bit late, but I recognize the presence of the C E O online. C E O, are you gonna be online?
No.
Yes, I'll be online on Zoom.
So she's coming, she's coming in and attending uh online on Zoom. Uh, the principals of elementary and high schools are here. So, uh, what's your name? But this is what the doctor's here. Yeah, he's here, so ladies and gentlemen. So, but we have a coram.
Yes.
Then let's start, okay?
As Madam Chair, so moved that we approved the minutes of May nine, twenty twenty five and June second, twenty twenty.
Was it to move the meeting of May nine, twenty twenty five and in a second? Okay, let's vote.
I.
Any discussion? Thank you, so moved, thank you very much. Your business?
How about the regular meeting minutes?
For just June second?
Can we just discuss?
May nine is the special meeting.
Oh, so when, when is the other one?
The regular meeting.
The regular meeting last month for June second.
I so moved that we approved the, the regular minutes of June second, twenty twenty five.
In a second?
Yes, I do.
It's, let's vote. I.
I.
Any discussion? Now it's in order. Let's go.
Okay, so on the screen, we're sharing the reports. For grants and other federal assistance, I should report to you that, um, from the last. Board meeting, Madam Fay, you instructed us to update you of how much is the premium for the workman's compensation. Um, to include our AmeriCorps members. So it was just two hundred forty-eight dollars in premium and that is also charged. To the grant. Um, actually, we received the payment for that already. So just to update you, this includes. Twenty-nine or thirty-one, um, AmeriCorps members. That way, they're covered as work, for the workman's compensation. Um, or the, um, whenever they do civil work or, um, work in the community.
Okay, so I would understand also that our regular G A C S, uh, employees. Have their, uh, their, their current W C, right? Workman's compensation. Thank you, thank you, CEO. Why is it important? Because these AmeriCorps, uh, members are, are working within our facility. So it's just proper for them to be covered by workman's compensation or anything and anything under that, that, uh, the workman's compensation. Covers, covers. Thank you, CEO. That's well done. Thank you.
Just wanna make sure that we cover them and we take care of our AmeriCorps members because they're considered, they're part of our. Um, in our school, yes. And they go to the classrooms to help out with, um, mentoring. Touring, so we wanna make sure they're covered. And they also always are in the public, like. Uh, mayor's office, small, um, libraries, so that they will be covered with whatever. Um, duties and responsibilities that they are performing while carrying the AmeriCorps, G A C S AmeriCorps.
So and they're covered while they're out on service would be covered by what? You recognize, first of all, thank you.
Because you're talking about AmeriCorps, I would like the board to thank Mister Ed.
Yes.
For, um, involving our students to participate in the liberation day. And I spoke with him before I came here, whether we were the only public. Participated, yes.
Yes.
Along with the University of Guam. So that, uh, I, I, just a shout out to him is, uh. Very commendable that our students are involved and they were able to witness why were somebody leaving this liberation day.
Yeah, they had the, they're the.
So, um, Mrs. Santiago, if you could please do a, a letter of commendation for Mister Ed. That would be very appropriate, uh.
I totally agree.
And being out there in the hot sun is not, not anything that anybody would want, but. They're doing it because they're proud. They're proud of our school and, um, they wanna be involved in community, uh. Affairs that, uh, related to education. So. Kids and the parents also who supported their, their kids to participate in that.
Yeah.
But on the other note, I would like to really congratulate, uh, uh, G A C S for being able to participate in a very good federal program. Uh, the AmeriCorps. The AmeriCorps program has a lot of value in terms of like how you're able to introduce our student into the world of work. And be paid while they're actually in school and doing some work. So AmeriCorps, AmeriCorps is, is one of those, uh. Early funded, uh, money that through the Department of Labor that we have a, our, we were able to access. So there's a hundred percent refund of the money or the salary that we pay the students.
Yeah.
But the important thing is the participation. And also, second, is also known that our students are immersing. Into the work or what might be just here, but they would understand what a discipline, what discipline is, what's meant by discipline when it comes to the world. To the world of working, right? So not only we're able to have the funding, we're able to participate in a very good program, a national program you made. And that's something that we put on the accolades of what, uh, uh, G A C S is all about. We're able to access and really utilize some of this sort of program. Away from the other things that we have done, like our, uh, our, uh, uh, C N P program. I don't know. But that's why, that's why we're gonna be see, Mr. Trump must cut, cut, cut. Anyway. Sorry.
Managed it, but shit.
We, we look like we're gonna go back to our own feeding program on our own, but we always have budgeted for that. So, uh. Uh, as long as the legislature supports us, that would be okay. So. Just go ahead, you recognize.
Yeah. If I may, I, I was at the liberation day. I was by the grant.
Wow.
And I was.
How'd you get there?
I was by the, I'm not on, but.
By on the side.
Still.
On the side.
That's a private location, sir.
So I was surprised when everybody was looking at me and just.
G A C S.
Wow, as a board member, I was.
They recognized.
Yeah.
They recognized my presence.
Will never be proud of the charter school.
And in relation to that, um, one of the main concerns in grants is sustainability.
Yes.
Yeah.
And I see that since we started, along with the University of Guam. We are giving our ability to sustain the program.
Yeah, that's true.
Our participation in the community is one of.
Yeah.
And I, I think. And I think it really states a bit, speaks volume of where we came from and, you know, of course, I would, you know, other challenges are, are on the other. Charter schools, but we survive those challenges. I think it's just like, uh, right leadership and just really fidelity on the money. On the funding that is being given to you by the government, to fidelity on what we are all about. And that gives us more. Or leverage and being able to really, uh, exist without any question.
One.
On, on, on the items as I are funding our curriculum and stuff like that. We have met all the requirements of what. Charter school is all about. Your accreditation is there. We have it for the last five years and another five or six years ongoing. Which is really interesting, which is really something that we can be proud of. That means we are above approach now when it comes to accreditation. Are, are, also our audit and thanks to all the, the, the trustees that always see this, uh, trustee Avla and trustee, uh. Uh, Arquesa have always been a fan to, uh, but I've been looking into the, uh, the fidelity of our use of the government funds. So. Over or to the years, we have, we have, we're given clean audit. And I, that, how, how, what is the right word for that, uh, trustee Avla? Say for the word clean audit.
Unmodified.
Modified. Thank you, CEO. That's the word I was looking for through the years. So that is something that we should be really proud of.
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, uh, Madam Fay, I also would like to acknowledge, um, the, um. It's really a, uh, teamwork. I really acknowledge, um, the involvement or. Assistance in the guidance of Ms. Doris Agan, who is the Executive Director of AmeriCorps. So this fiscal year, she was letting us know that, um. Um, considering with all, considering all the budget cuts, right, of the Trump administration, there's only two. Um, to approve the AmeriCorps programs and that would be U O G and G A C S. So.
Wow.
I would like to thank her too, because she really guided us and to make sure that we are, um.
Wow.
Maximizing the use of the program. Uh, we were approved, um, last year we appr- uh, we applied for it. There's a lot of paperwork, but this is the second fiscal year that we're, cause it's a three-year, three-year contract. So although we didn't get approved right away last year, we completed the requirements this second year. So we still have one year next year. Um, she's now working on the next fiscal year, but this. Year, which is January to December twenty twenty-five, um, we have, we're approved for seven hundred eighty-three thousand dollars. Um, again, I would like to acknowledge and thank Ms. Doris because she really, um, calls me. We have this. Good relationship and not only the liberation or all these activities, it's really, AmeriCorps is really tied up. To our We Care program because as soon as our seniors graduate or once they are. Um, qualified, they, we, we encourage them. Mister Ed goes to every classroom. Even the, the counselors go to the classroom and make sure they encourage, um, our qualified. High schoolers to join the AmeriCorps program. It's like an internship.
Yes.
Already. And then it addresses those who don't have transportation because not only they can serve. Here on school, but, um, in the community as well. Um, last summer or even before. The end of the, um, the school year, our AmeriCorps members were going to public school, library, um. Public elementary schools to read the books to the students. So they go to the libraries. There are other activities that they are engaged in, engaged in, not only to help our own students, but also other. Um, charter schools or other public school students. Because that's our number one objective. For the program is mentoring, um, mentoring the little ones.
Uh, that's good.
Okay. And then on the screen or on your handout, just to give you an idea. Um, when our contract was signed by, um. A G and the governor, we, we could start the reimbursement process. So these are the invoices that. Out of the seven hundred eighty-three thousand, every month we do a draw and submit our expenses.
Yeah.
And this is what we have. So for the month of April, we already received that. Nineteen thousand four hundred ninety-five amount to date, it's already in our bank account. Um, and on June twenty-fifth. Um, when we submitted our May expenses, we also received twenty-three, another twenty-three thousand seven hundred ninety-eight. And it's pretty quick. Just like how we do draws for D O A. So we receive it right away. Um. We have our own system. AmeriCorps has our own system for the performance measures. That way, the times and the. The requirements and the paperwork are all submitted to Ms. Doris, the Executive Director. And then she reviews it, of course. With the coordination and the, um, of Ms. Badet, our Chief Accountant. So we've been receiving it right away. We submitted it in a week, um, two weeks. It's the first. Um, I believe it's, it took about two or three weeks for the first draw, but after that, once we submit at the end of the month. We get it right away.
The reimbursement, reimbursement is all about, all the salaries that we pay, including social security.
Yes.
This program is very dear to me because when I opened up my company in nineteen eighty-nine, I used AmeriCorps, uh, employee, AmeriCorps participants. Then in three months, if you're there, good performance, you get hired as permanent. I have my best employees out of the American program. So those were my first employee, uh, employees and I opened up a company in eighteen ninety. So because I'm very familiar with the program. So. I, I tell you, it is really the, uh, the participation of N, of, of employers in this program is really vital.
Yeah.
Because they, you can really train them. They're really raw, like what we do in high school student, but imagine training them in the world of work. Here in our campus, that's really an introduction. So the next level to that is to be able to find outside employment outside our company.
Yes.
Training with A and social security.
Yeah.
Is already a big thing for our high schoolers, right? So I really love that program.
Then after they complete their hours, actually, they are given the, the scholarship for their college too.
Wow.
That separates the six hundred fifty dollars that they receive each month. And the extensive training that they do. Online, um, how to handle grants, um, the requirements that they have to go through, drug test. It's just like applying, applying for a federal position. So that's the requirement. All the clearances, um, fingerprinting, so all of those, um, that also is included in these, um.
That's good for her. Yeah. She loves that too. Thank you, CEO. Thank you, CEO.
So, um, next is the C N P on top. If you would see, just to give you an update as well. We start, we got approved last year. The beginning was November and I believe sometime in February. I, sometime in April, I reported that we received the ninety-five thousand four hundred eighty-three, which is the reimbursements. For the months of November, December and January. Um, in the month of February. Uh, we claimed forty-three thousand eight hundred ninety-seven, as you can see. March thirty-eight thousand, April thirty-two thousand. And then May twenty-four thousand. I already followed up on C N P as to how. Um, it's a series of documentation that we have to report to, um, the draws or the. It's based on what was actually consumed or reimbursable. Again, reimbursable meals are, mean that. Um, C N P will give us reimbursement, reimbursements for meals that are complete. So if a child only took. The juice or the milk, it's not reimbursable. So every single breakfast and lunch and meal is. Um, accounted for at the line in the cafeteria. And thank you again for Ms. Remy. Who's been taking over, um, and Mister Carlos, who is our meals coordinator. C N P coordinator.
And, and thank you, uh, C, I mean, CEO for pursuing the C N P program because that actually. Thanks to the man of that money earmarked, we, that's why we have a surplus of eight hundred thousand, because that money was earmarked specifically for meals. So now we have that surplus. So we look at each other, why do we have surplus? Because we have the C N P program thanks to you. Now you can reprogram that.
Right.
Right? And be able to utilize that for anything other, you know, that you use, they still can use. Thank you, CEO, for pursuing this program. Thank you.
As long as we show that we maximize all the grants and the federal assistance that we are able to, um. Take, right? Um, I think that's the goal of the team, to make sure that we maximize all the grants. Um, whether it's consolidated grant, emergency funds, or any federal programs such as AmeriCorps and C N.
Yeah.
And they do, once we receive the remaining of the months, their reimbursement for the last four months. Back to our agenda, um, here is, where did it go?
Accreditation, that.
Yes, um.
By, by the way, the fixed asset inventory, uh, that's done, accomplished?
Oh, no, yeah. Um, I just wanted to share with you this, um. Um, every school year, because we are recipients of the fixed, uh, um, fixed assets from G D O E, right? So every school year at the month, um, April or May of each year, we get a report. Or we are being evaluated by D O E, specifically the fixed asset inventory. And I just wanted to share with you the report. It's a longitudinal report that we prepared. To see, um, criteria for this one. Let me share it, sorry. Share. So I would like to acknowledge our I T team, specifically Mister Ryan. Um, it shows progress, progress, um, this, every year. So I'm starting to show the twenty-twenty-two school year. On the top, if you could see. So this is the rubric. Exceeds is scored, um, the score for exceeds the. Exceeding is forty-five, forty-one to forty-five points. Needing the standards is thirty-six points to forty. And of course, needs improvement is thirty-five and below. So, um, when I first started. Um, we, we, in the, in the fixed asset, we have, of course, um. Mister Arquesa shared with me how we have to make sure we monitor all our fixed asset. Um, anything that we receive, especially that, these are the tagged items, whether it's be an electronic device. Um, even, even before during the pandemic, when we receive it. And if we, if it already passed the five years, if it's obsolete. We have to report to G D O E, um, what we have, what we, or any damage, um, electronic device. So in twenty-twenty-two, um, I went far as twenty-twenty-two, I'm not privy, I'm not privy with. The other, um, evaluations from the previous years, but in twenty-twenty-two, our score was thirty-seven out of forty-five. Which means we're in the needs improvement, uh, majority is because there are items that were lost and we. I don't know, we had to do a report at that time, I believe. Um, but we have set up a system from then on to make sure that, um, in a standard operating procedure. Um, I informed the administrators that items should not be moved. From, from a certain area. So if there are twenty-five iPads, for example, in a classroom, it, um. There's an inventory that, uh, Mister Ryan and Mister Jonah looks at and every year they have to. And it must be reported to them. And then we also, um, shared with our homeroom teachers. That they are responsible and accountable for the devices that they have. So. Um, on the second year or in twenty-twenty-three, it went up to thirty-nine, um, less, less, um. Devices that are not, um, um, that are always in the, um, the cart where they should belong. Because every time you move it, you have to report to them. Because they only do the inspection once a year, sometime in April or May. Um, in twenty-twenty-four, we have a forty-two, which is already, um. Exceeding the standard. And most recently, we have a perfect score, nothing, everything is accounted for. So the last one, kudos to our I T team, Mister Ryan and Mister Jonah, we have a forty-five. Just wanted to share with you, um, accountability when it comes to our federal, um. Fixed asset inventory, because these are funded or given through consolidated grant and the emergency funds. Any questions?
Yeah.
I have no question and I also thank the principal, vice-principal.
Yes, Mister Ryan and Jonah.
Okay. So next would be, I think my battery is dying. Let me just, if you can excuse me. I'll get that one speed. Here we go. So accreditation, six-year term, we officially received the email from Cognia that. Uh, we were accredited, we are accredited and we, our, the expiration, or we're gonna do another engagement. Or re-accreditation, um, in twenty thirty-one. We received for six years, another six years.
Is there like a midterm, uh, visit or? Or report that's due to them?
No, there's no midterm. They don't do that because we, it's like full accreditation for six years. But what we do is. We report to them and we make sure we follow the standards and the Elliot observations. And then we have a, um. Communication with the engagement team and actually, Latisha Barnes, who is the head for international accreditation. Actually, we just spoke last week and we are sponsoring. G A C S will be sponsoring the training that they will come here in the, um, October. Particularly to update us with the new or not additional standard. And they're also going to do some training, particularly on the recommendations that they, the engagement team gave us.
Just follow up.
And we're inviting all the schools who are accredited under Cognia, um, um, Saint Anthony. Um, Career Tech. And I just had a Zoom meeting with the lead evaluator. Mister McCarthy, Doctor McCarthy, um, yesterday, actually. So we are setting the agenda for. Those days, October twenty to twenty-four. Um.
Other board members welcome to sit in?
Yes, definitely, because, um, I will send you the updated agenda. We're just trying to organize it. And see how it's gonna be done because this will be the first time. Um, um, we shared. Or Mister McCarthy shared with Latisha, with Cognia, that we were trying to reach out to them for several times, right? Before, when they shifted to the thirty standards. Unfortunately, it was late. We had to go through Kentucky to get that training. And the training that they have is only online, but so. Because she heard him and Mister McCarthy shared it with, um, the Cognia team, then they reached out and said that, okay. Since they're going to visit Japan, I believe, um, sometime in October, then they will just fly to Guam. And make that arrangement.
Are there any costs involved with G A C S? They're like.
Yes. So they, um, from Cognia, they said that, um, the, the, the flight is under them. It's just the lodging that we should cover. And then that's why she opened it up to. If other schools are willing to attend, maybe we can somehow, being the sponsor, share the cost of the, just the accommodation.
So is it?
Any will be here at G A C S.
Is that only one? Then McCarthy will be the only one coming or is it gonna be a brainwash or?
Yeah, there's three people, tentatively, that's set, two from Cognia. And one is independent of Cognia, like, Dr., Mister McCarthy is coming over to, to do the training. Specifically the request that we have. So we're putting in, it in under our budget for P D. Because this is, um, specifically for our needs.
Yeah.
Um, they will set up one day just specifically for our teachers' needs or particularly specifically for the G A C S needs. P D, like, um, student engagement and differentiated instruction with digital learning and all the recommendations. And then. Um, on other days, which is, um, sharing with us the, the changes and the new updates of the Cognia platform. That, um, other schools will be welcome to, to, to join. So I also reached out to Mister Joe Sanchez and he already. Um, confirmed his attendance. He said he wants to join also when they arrive here, um, in October.
Yeah, let us know on the schedule.
Yes, um, but, um, that's for sure already, October twenty to twenty-four. Um, I informed them that. We can't. Have all four whole days because we're serving definitely one of the October. have all four whole days because we're serving definitely one of the October P D day. Because our students, teachers cannot be all at the same time. Or meaning we cannot have P D for all four days. Because we're gonna lose instructional hours. So we're trying to 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 set the schedule that way we won't lose any instructional hours for us too. Um, D W A corrected results. Um, this is just to go over because last June second, um, it was reported that there's six hundred ninety two students who took the test of the Smarter Balance Assessment. And I just want six hundred ninety two students um in the minutes. So I just wanted to make sure that we give the accurate report that there's no, there's only three hundred forty one students took the test. Because the test um administered for the D W A by G D O E is only for third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth, seventh, eighth, and only eleventh grade in the high school. So this is just to correct those um information in the data. And I wanted to report to the board that um the team always uh will be looking into this and use this as a baseline data for our D W A. Um, where is that? Um, we also prepared the charts. Um, the way we organize the data is to show where they, where each grade level stands. That way, we can focus on what particular grade level we have to make sure, ensure that they are prepared. So based on this report, this is the legend for the proficiency levels. And this is how other public schools or other G D O E and other charter schools report on the D W A as well. It's by grade level. Um, red is um are the students who did not reach that level. Yellow is nearly met standard, green, I mean, blue is met the standard. And four, level four is exceeded the standard. So on this chart, as you could see and you have your handouts, um, the we separated the third to fifth because that's elementary. We separated the middle school, which is six, seven, and eight. And then high school only there's one eleventh grade. So the goal is for our strategic plan, of course. Uh, the goal is that all students in that grade level be ready or on the standard. Not meet the standard. Meaning every year we have to make sure that the red part is going lower and lower.
Yes, really.
And then the yellow, orange, um yellow or orange and the blue and the green will go higher and higher so that every grade will need. Uh, we don't want to really compare. It's just what we did is just we wanted to see where we stand um from all the students here in the public school. So um, this is where we stand. Um, from all the public schools, I have noticed that um it is, what do you call this? Agania Heights in the elementary who has the most um, who has a a good, better results. Um, for middle school, it's um Antalan Middle School. And then for high school, it is actually Tezen High School.
They concentrate their professional.
But it's very actually, I know it's not as, it's not as good. But of course, our goal is to make sure we, all our students will meet the standard. But um, yeah, we're not actually low um compared to the other public schools. Um, any more question for that part?
Continue moving forward to reduce the risk.
Yes. And then um out of this data information, what we have observed, which the principals will be focusing on, is in the elementary, we need to focus more on our fourth grade level. Because the one who scored the lowest is our fourth grade. That means we have to make sure um our fourth grade team is um will be um there's a lot of things to work on for especially to prepare our fourth grade. And in the middle school is actually our sixth grade. Who we need to focus on. Okay, um, next, um, attendance and behavior data. Because the school is, we were on vacation. I just would like to report to you that previously we've been, I've been sharing with you with the board that our challenges for our attendance is not really accurate. Because our RENWEB, our um student information system is taking um when a high school student is absent class, it's considered absent the whole day. And that's the reason why our attendance rates are very low. But we found a way to 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 make sure that if a student is excused, then it's not considered absent. Um, just like G D O E, I think, I believe, um power school reports, if the child is present for four more, more than four hours, then it's considered present. So we found a way. Thank you to Miss Kami. Miss Kami and Mister Ryan just came from the RENWEB training in Salt Lake City. So she was able to show our uh Ms. Colette how to or the the administration on how to make sure that we set it up that way so that our RENWEB and attendance alignment will be. I'm looking forward to giving you more accurate information on our attendance reports, attendance rates this coming school year.
CEO, can you, can you have uh your, our I T people kind of like have a diagram on how the full utilization of the RENWEB? Some of our, so you know how you're able to catch all this information? From this initiation of how you at, of how we introduce the RENWEB uh uh RENWEB tracking system, uh, I think this is also tied up with our, uh, if we, was it before tied up also with our uh meals program or something? But it was tied up with something else. So this rather is attendance, is attendance protocol.
Then, yes. Um, the number of students are demographic, so we always use RENWEB to report. The monthly report that I give to the board, um, is all coming from RENWEB.
Did at one point in time, this also, this also captures the numbers of meals that we serve and not serve. Integrated, no?
No, no, we can't. Um, we have a different program years back, but it was not approved. Um, although RENWEB has the
The feature. I thought that's how we're capturing those data. So we could, we could efficiently report it back to the uh, to the uh uh meals program, uh, efficiently tracking it, efficiently being able to collect money back for for uh our meals program. There's gotta be some kind of uh protocol that would not have to be prepared by us, that would be have to be, that would be collected as data rather than, you know, actually we we capture it. It's gonna be some kind of a um data, data collection rather than manual collection because that could be erased, that could be changed. Because the RENWEB captures that at the one point in time, the 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 feeding program was part of that. That we're able to integrate that with a feeding program aside from the attendance. So I don't understand where where they are now. So that would efficiently be, that we could efficiently bring that back to the uh to the challenge mission, to the C N P uh people and tell them, hey, look, this is how much we this is, you know, how much money we need for reimbursement, right?
They do sound that every day.
Yeah, yeah, that's why I said if that, if your RENWEB captures that, if that is integrated and I believe at one point in time we have that uh uh ability to do that. I don't know where it is now and I don't know what date, at what uh, what methodology do we use in capturing the C N P? Is that final? Since we already approved a C N P uh abuse program. Yeah, yeah, that's why I said it's just more automatic. Did you do that, Johnny? Uh, is that, is that integrated on the RENWEB? There was a one point in time we were able to turn that in one of the software that we were using for attendance. And let's jump that out.
Hello.
Okay, let's go.
logged out. My battery died. I'm back. Can you hear me now? So sorry.
Yeah, we can hear you.
No, you were saying about RENWEB to pr- to make a report of how we can
No, 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 the the, it was integrated into uh some kind of data collection process at one point in time where we integrate our C N P with attendance, right?
Yeah, so um it's, uh, yes. Yeah, we only use the report of the daily students who, the students who are daily the daily attendance of our students because it's tied into our C N P report. So that's being checked every time by C N P team to make sure that if there's seven hundred students who are present today and you're claiming seven hundred twenty five meal, meals, something is wrong. So it has to be very accurate because we, our reports and our reimbursements is um tied up to our daily attendance for every grade level. So we wanna make sure that we are always accurate and um up to date or real time. And actually, Mister Jonah is the one responsible for uploading the daily attendance, even during vacation, it has to get uploaded to the platform.
Next one is H one visa, it's uh, please go ahead, a meeting with
This is fair, CEO.
Oh, okay.
Hi, sorry. Technical difficulties, can you hear me? So next would be the H one visa updates. Two days ago, I spoke with the law office of Attorney Black. Um, we reached out to him to get quotations of how he could help us um process H one visas. Um, he already gave me the requirements, which we already all have. It's a matter of submitting to him. Um, the fees accompanied to it um are just basically the filing fees. Um, and uh we'll share with the board in a work session. Um, technically, the the initial pay is only, is thirty five hundred to process. Um, applications. We already have received applications and applicants. Um, applications um from the Philippines. But um he was saying that it could be anyone from Japan, Korea, any teacher.
So you, you have a, you have an open, there's an X amount of of uh of open petition for an H one. And you decide what category, on what kind of skills, on what kind of proficiency would you want under the H one category? Because that, that, that is a blanket petition that you have, am I correct?
Yes, and it has to be a minimum of a four-year course. It's a cer- um certifi- certify, not certified teachers, but uh particularly um a four-year degree course.
Yeah, okay. At least I know that we have blanked petition. Then it's just a justification of how we bring them in, what we bring in. So, yeah.
And I also required, I I also inquired about because we have received some applications here also. Um, but they're not, they're already here in Guam, but they have a different visa status. So I inquired with attorney and he said that it's just a change of status. Because they're already here. Probably they're dependent of a, an H one. But they cannot work. So that's faster i- in a way because the the applicants are already here on.
Yeah, yeah. They're under a, an F one visa, which gives them a flexibility. But those are almost the same as what we have under H one. We don't have to house them. But we don't have to do the paperwork. We just have to be, they just have
But the requirements still apply. So they have to have a bachelor's degree, open requirements, yes, and everything. Um, that's for the H one visa updates and then facility maintenance updates. During the summer break, um, we have um um already cleaned and prepared the the school for the opening of this um, the school year twenty five, twenty six. So actually, all the classrooms were buffed, scrubbed, and waxed already. Thank you to Three J's. They have a good team this year, um, the offices. We also painted the breezeway, as you would notice. Um, skid paint to make it cleaner after, after we water blasted all the even the roofs, we water blasted um everything. So it's very clean to prepare for our, if we get inspected sometime in October. Um, last Saturday, um, we, I asked Cortec to do a painting, um, because it's supposed to be every ten years, right? But we, after thirteen years, I I begged and asked for them to repaint the classroom. So they already painted five classrooms last Saturday. And it started with building C. Um, every Saturday, they are sending their people to paint over the classrooms, a fresh fresh paint, even the doors as well. Um, the next request would be the trimmings, the exterior, because it's been six years. Apparently, Cortec will do repainting every five years for exterior. So we've been just cleaning the classrooms, scrubbing it. But this time, we asked them to really repaint, do a fresh paint. So the next So the next Saturdays, they will be moving to building D. And we've asked them to prioritize C and D because that's the the worst painting.
I may ask, uh what about public health requirements?
Yes, that's why it's based on the, we're doing it. The the maintenance and repairs that we are, we did during the summer is. Align to the requirements of public health. We are pretend, we're like assuming that they're gonna be here inspecting. That's why I, that's why we requested the property owner to update, whatever has to be updated. Hard when it, when the, when the students are here in October. So I said, you have to do it while students are not around.
Right. Okay, wraps it up. CEO, thank you for your report.
Thank you.
You, may I put it to uh governance committee, I think that's my committee, acknowledge a. Presentation of one board member. Uh I believe we are still in in compliance with the number, with the number of trustees that we have. I think it was also a uh a uh desire for us to give the number that we have for now. As as we maintain the number of 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 trustees that we have until until we're able to really. Get into. Right now, so reaffirmation of all the committees that we have are still on governance. First, Devolak for the fiscal or finance part of the committee, trustee uh. Trustee Arquesa will be on the audit and trustee Rosie, you will still be on the curriculum. And trustee Lou, uh president of HR committee. So it 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 complements the whole requirement of what we need to have. As far as like our uh our mandates are concerned, okay? Um what else do I have to?
Okay, do we move to accept the resignation of the board member chair?
Can we go ahead and have a motion on the affirmation? Okay, so that that's what we would. So the committee is, we're designated, we maintain our own committee. Uh hopefully, we can have some changes when we have the big classrooms and the big facility that we have, we need more help there. Right now, I think amongst ourselves, this is manageable, correct? So uh.
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead. Your recognition.
Well, may I move up item number five?
Okay.
Up because.
Okay, go ahead, sir. Thank you for requesting, uh any, 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 any. Any, any, uh, any, uh, any question about that? Will we have to move into item number five of our uh our uh our agenda? Okay, so move, go ahead, sir.
All right, thank you very much, uh Madam Chair. Uh with all due respect to you all, I am always happy to be part of this team. Knowing that the school has been progressively moving forward, maintaining its goals and objectives. But there are some certain areas that we identified. To be working or focusing our attention on. Uh anyway, um as far as financial report is concerned, in the absence of our. Financial officer, I knew at the time we had together, we very limited. Since uh I came back, back and she left. So, but um and as far as finance matters are concerned. Uh I think the CEO was reporting on some im- important financial information. On reimbursement of what we have expended for the two important programs. Number one is the uh. The meals as well as that. That other program. And uh those are very important uh financial pieces of information that we should be aware of. And I think, given what she was reporting, all the total amounts that we first of all is over a hundred thousand. All together. And I'm glad uh we are being updated on that as well. Thank you, CEO. Brilliant movement you have exerted. Uh for for CACs to move forward and all the different programs you have putting on. And I think that's all I can report financially speaking. Uh I think once the chief financial officer is back, to point out everything that I can.
Um I I'm sharing it, do you see it on the screen, uh Ms. Badet's report over here? I'll go over it, third quarter, April to June.
Yeah, it's just because of my time was limited.
Uh CEO, the the budget for the overall is about half a million, five hundred or four hundred, we're three hundred and one thousand, how much? How much more do we have to spend?
Two more million, because we've been getting reimbursement, so we have, we're, we have two million extra.
Okay, all right, so uh we need a motion to accept the uh the P N L as reported by both. Um Rasevulak and the CEO. Second please. Motion uh motion seconded, so we we need to vote on it because somebody needs to go.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, let's go to the.
Actually, Ms. Rosie first, Ms. Rosie, curriculum, week care update.
But Anne, you already reported on the facility maintenance update, so I don't think.
Yes, so now for a curriculum, college and career update for the. The contract, you were going to report on it. The consul, the expiration of the. September and your proposal to make sure that we continue.
We will go ahead and I would then recommend that we would go ahead and keep it within our system since our people are. Are able to complete that program. So I would go ahead and recommend that we we keep that in-house, Ms. Anne, CEO. We don't need to go out and do it again.
Yes, yes, correct. Yeah, we like that. Go ahead, please continue.
And so, because our employees are really well. Averse of already of what needs to be done, so I would like to go ahead and keep it in-house instead of putting it out, opening up another. Yes.
Motion to accept the uh the proposal to continue the week air in-house. And uh a proposed contracting for the next uh for the next uh. Uh renewal will not will not be adopted by the. By GACS, okay? I need a second please.
While while we're on that subject, uh CEO, can you please? Make sure that the new program that we have adopted with the universal one, the aquaponics. Is is in place and is completed.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll make sure that the the administration and the curriculum team. Um with assistance, definitely major participation of the counselors will fulfill. Our week care program and make sure that it is monitored, well monitored. And just to update, um Miss, since the principal and assistant principal are here with us. Um two of our point of contact, Mrs. Manembusan and our science teacher. Completed the training for our aquaponics um at U O G, so this school year. They are, we are able to make sure that we.
So how how does it work? We we have to send the students to uh, I've taken some, how how do we do that?
So because our teachers are trained, they will send, um the training will be from U O G. So he's going to come here on our school to show how to to implement and how to do the aquaponics. They will give us the the supplies and equipment that we need for it to. To be used as our service learning as well and tied up to our.
I want to have the lab, yeah, my yard. Don't do it, I have the money for it, remember, I have one, I have a fund in my house, so. All I have to do is siblings, we those.
And and I thank the Mister Chrisostomo for spearheading that and really proposing that. Because he really coordinated with U O G to ensure that. We take advantage of the of this program.
Hey, where are we now, next?
Human resource, Ms. Lu.
HR please, yes. Uh right now, I know it's not on the agenda, but it is, it is normal to report. That the elementary teaching position completes the elementary team. Uh the position also that has been filled is the teacher assistant.
Field ready, nice.
The vacant positions, oh, I'm sorry, and also the music teacher. I I don't know, somebody from another school. The um vacant positions are uh secondary teaching. Um CEO, what is the uh subject area for this position?
Actually, right now, it is um for social studies. Is it social studies or English? Oh, because we found the master schedule, we we. We made the master schedule to accommodate, but um having another teacher. To make sure that we have um social studies. Right, Dr. Lelaine? For U S three, yeah, okay.
Going back to the agenda, the principal and assistant principal evaluation instrument. I'd like to put that on hold until I meet with the CEO regarding our uh. Discussion earlier on the organizational chart and how that impacts. The uh evaluation of the principal and the assistant principal currently. So uh until I meet with her and uh then a presentation to the board will take place. Thank you. Uh the structured written agenda for new employees. Uh I, when I meet with the CEO, I would like to submit a proposed. Uh way of handling the new employees, that way there's an accountability. In place and the the new employee will feel that they really are a part of the school. And none of this, though I didn't get it, because you know, we don't have anything in writing, but if we structure it. Uh then we have the new employees sign off that they have received the orientation. And these were the topics that were covered.
I I think, I think trust of you, we have an orientation package, I just don't know where it is now, I just, I don't know whether to update that. Because we have one from from the lo- from the local side, but I think there is one, but it really needs to be updated. So if we can have, who's the HR now?
So I'll meet, I'll meet uh with, with, with the CEO and maybe the C, the HR to get their opinion.
So we're gonna have to, you know, we we can.
But I have, I have a proposal.
Yes, yes.
Very, very, very organized. We, you know, we want our new employees to feel that they are uh valued. And that they know who to go to to get help, because let's face it, the, especially with the teachers, right? They're coming in maybe for the first time, they're in a teaching profession. We want them to know, uh be comfortable and be able to get all the help. Uh in terms of the curriculum, how to handle kids and on and on, you know, so uh.
I think we, we had, we did a previous meeting, we had ready assign yourself and the CEO, somebody else, maybe the HR. Person to be able to integrate, squash out, take out whatever is is really uh. Just update the whole thing, so we can adopt a new uh, a new HR policy.
So um in terms of the positions, the CEO. Do you know approximately how many teachers from last school year are not returning? You have a ball.
The one for sure is the one for sure who already informed us. During the um surveying, cause we, the principals handed a survey um sometime in March. Like a statement of um not commitment, but their their intent to return. There's two who's for sure not returning.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um the third amended handbook, personal rules and regulations.
So we um last. Ma- Ms. Lu, last um I think a month before, I have um, Ms. Kami. Has been working on updating our employee handbook, the second amended employee handbook. And then I um I shared with you the the additions or the edits that we have. So we ca- we call it um personal rules and regulation and to make sure they're all aligned. So um just to show you a snippet, we need one more work session before before the board can. Um approve it, but I just wanted to share with you how it looks like. Um to make sure that it's updated, um which also includes the structured way you were saying, right? Um for a new employee, at least when they look at the employee handbook or the personal rules and reg, they already know what to expect. When a, when an onboarding employee.
I I thought we were working with the legal counsel. All since, what happened to that?
No, yes, she, so we um that's separate from the personal rules and reg. But we included like, for example, specifically what she's working on is the grievance procedure. So we are updating that. Because, and we're also including that already in personal rules and reg, that way it's not two separate. Um documents that they're looking at.
So that's the only area that she's working on?
Yes, personnel rules to make sure it's aligned and it's updated. But um we're ninety, I would say, um ninety-five percent. Complete with the updated personal rules and reg. Yes, and so I need just one more work session with the board, so we can really go.
One, so it's a work session that we need to go, because we don't have to be at the attorney's third eye's office, right? Okay, because her, her schedule is pretty tough, right? Send it back to her and see what she needs to tweak around, around what we have worked on. I think that's easier, because. It's really hard to get a fully accurate schedule, just. So.
So if if I just would like to share this with you, just quick one. Because I believe I gave a copy, a hard copy to the trustees um a couple of months ago. But at least this one would show, hold on, so sorry. Oops, not that. My, my screen is, there's so much going on, there you go. Do you see it?
Yes, we can see, yes.
Yes, so this is how it looks like. If it looks familiar, um I just need one more um work session with the board. So that we can show you the the edits or the addition or the updates from that. Um in this one, we also included. Um ju- just like how it was before, the purpose of this. um ju- just like how it was before, the purpose of this handbook, um and we included the org chart so that everyone knows who to go to as part when an employee is new or Oh, of course, our vis- our philosophy, vision, mission, the purpose and in the original uh employee handbook, there's some mention about the nature and classification of employment, which is at-will employee. But we added these ones to make sure that everyone understands what at-will means. So exemptions to at-will employment. Although at-will means that neither party can terminate the employment with for a re- for any reason with or without cost, there are exemptions to the rule. Um federal and local laws must be followed and there's no breach of contract. So if you have a contract, then we cannot just terminate the 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 employee. Oh, we added these, the highlighted ones in yellow, exceptions to at-will employment, which is discrimination, of course, retaliation and breach of contract and violation of public policy, because these are federal laws that apply. We included this just to make sure both parties understand what at-will means. Our employees before, when they think of it, oh, it were at-will, so anytime the employer can terminate our contract. No, uh yes, we there's there should be a valid reason for the the, for example, in terms of budget um based on performance. Not just because I don't like the color of your hair, so we'll terminate your contract. I am uh putting the exemptions on the employee handbook would clarify um that to our employees. And wrongful termination is also included there, that way they understand. Um we also included um like the 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 definitions. These are rules and regulation, what's personal action, a supervisor, updated all the the positions. Um and then we also included discipline, progressive discipline as part that we have to make sure we keep good record and maintain good record for the performance, because that's only the the reason why we the employer will terminate the contract.
As you, wait a minute, the uh the uh storage of records, right? Okay, so progressive discipline, for example, that is contained in a folder hopefully handled by the H R person, whoever she is, right? There it, I just wanna make sure we have files to go back to, in case there are challenges with the uh with Department of Labor, things like that, or anything else that, you know, we has, we still have pending stuff. I don't know where it's resolved, which it's currently resolved. But those kind of things are expected sometimes for unhappy employees or people that did that now or doesn't know how uh why they were terminated, even given reasons, right? So those are things that are being contested or being challenged at at the end. So we wanna make sure that uh those progressive discipline are recorded properly. Just so it doesn't take very hard for, and I know you guys have been have been very good at that, so when we go and send it, we we are legally tapped and probably these people are able to give it to the to the council and be able to to get all the the uh the different progression of of the events, right? And I I think for the longest time, as I observed with current uh situation right now, I've seen that to be very, very careful in really putting out and then within very, very diligent in putting all these documents together. Don't miss one document of importance that will that will be on any, that will be a big help for us and have that contained in our H R H R file. You know, because we have nothing, you know, if we do that, we're not able to contain these documentations and record it properly and we get challenged, and we already have a few. So I wanna make sure that we're able to to put that up on the uh on the front and and validate all the reason why there were terminations. So that's just all. I just wanna make sure that we have a
Yeah, that is why in in the documentation and presentation of that documentation to the employee very important that it's very important that you point out the date, the time, and what happened, and that's it. It's just what happened. And then the the employee is is given really an opportunity to meet with the uh with the uh C E O in this case, who makes the final decision on the hiring and firing to to be given the opportunity to be heard. That's it. Uh but if you have in your document that fact, the date and the time and what was we don't need to go beyond those factors. Discriminatory, no, because on this particular day, you were observed to be jerking the the hand of a student at this time. You know, those just based on facts, not what I think, what should, it's just presentation on what the facts are, and the date and the time are so important factors, because if you have that done, it's not related to discrimination. Discrimination, yes. For example, you have two candidates that are applying for the position. And the one that has lesser experience got hired. So I'm just putting another example, because the hiring agent or the C E O hired this particular person because she's of this race. You know, that in itself could be discriminatory, so uh presenting the facts, the date, the time, what was the incident? It's just short and simple, but very meaningful.
But exemplary way of keeping your records, because that that is the one that we can go back to over and over again, whether it's legal contest or just one-on-one contest with H R and and the So uh yeah, thank you. I just wanna be reminded of of those things. I have with me here two docs board resolution. Is this supposed to stay in our jacket? In our
Oh, I think it's for your signature.
By everybody, this tax seven two five two six six. But I I you guys have filed this one here in our in our office, because these are all original signatures.
Oh, so maybe that's the one you were looking for. It got into your packet. There's one more signature that we need, I believe.
These are one and the same uh resolution, but I have both copies. So where is your file copy? See, I got you this time.
Oh, the original. Original goes to the binder, Madame Fei.
Okay, my binder?
So our binder, we keep that.
Oh, okay, now we
Maybe that's a copy only.
Yeah, uh oh, where's the
So that's why it's there, because we need one more. Okay, thank you. Yes. So that's it, one more session. Um uh one last um additional to our personal rules and ro- reg is also the employee complaint and feedback. There was a po- um there was a form that the board approved last time. Um already, we're including that here in the employee handbook as well. So that we have forms to use for every, for um staff's concern. And we're including that also. Formal complaint process and internal feedback options, which are two different things.
We have the form of the initiation of the complaint.
Yes, that way it's official.
Very good, thank you.
And it's already indicated and it's separate, although it's separate from the grievance policy, we're also including that here, so that it's just one document that has all everything, all the information an employee needs.
Okay, and Marita?
That's it for the for the employee handbook. We're done with budget and finance earlier. Um audit, there's none so far. Uh we still have one more quarter. And then um seven, facility, school, health and safety, so I believe Miss um Miss Rosie is just following up on um
Everything is ready for the opening of the school.
So just make sure, make sure that we have that the full complement of what you need as far as like your uh faculties, your uh support staff, right? Those those are those are important. I know that we have got pretty much the same. And the population still, um group population is what, at seven sixteen still? What is
We requested for seven eighty, but uh we haven't heard from the council.
Yeah, so hopefully we can follow up on that and and just so, because we are, we have open enrollment, right? Wanna know our limit and what would be given to us with the legislature, because together with that is also your funding for people costs. So we make sure that that is affirmed, reaffirmed by the legislature as to what what is our enrollment capacity based on the budget that they're gonna give us, okay? We survive with an extra, a little bit more more student from the uh from the uh twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget, but now we're doing a twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six budget. We wanna make sure that we accommodate, that it given it and and even the uh the per people cost of what we have requested. There's a You work directly with the with the committee chair, so congratulations and thank you for that. Because as that's, we start one in the whole charter school uh population, get the same money, so we always seems to initiate the movement, we're able to share that, which is really good, because we have a very good C E O. So anyway, just that one, so we'll know our budget situation, just to make sure. Based on that budget, what is, what would be the approved population they're gonna give us, right?
It must be noted, though, that I would like to inform that um we have um uh an amount of students who are moving off island, so our enrollment is re- also going down, just to make you know, um very common um in all schools, but we also are getting um incoming and then um because we really are updating Renweb, we have removed all those um we found a way to clear our Renweb to make sure that every school year before we progress, we we withdraw or we change the status of our graduating students. That way um we keep a uh um an accurate count of our um population, yes. So we cleaned it up to make sure that it's not doubled or it's not duplicate or it is accurate every day. Not just every month, but every day.
Every day, very good.
Anyway, Renweb captures your your attendance, so what I'm saying is the the projection of how much student needs to be in our budget, right? So if last last bu- last budget year, we have a little bit extra, but you know, we Take care of that.
No, there's nothing for new business, I believe. And then do you want to proceed?
Second session for the C E O evaluation. Are we, are we able to finish this or can we table this?
Why don't we tape it? Cause we don't even have anything yet to look at. We would like to make sure that when we evaluate the C E O, it's all for
There's still the board members that has some Is are all the evaluation forms turned in already to
I just to up- update you, the one you did was just to correct the twenty twenty three. This is a new one now, the year that passed, this twenty four, twenty five, so it's due I think the question is, in a work session, we'll the updated evaluation tool, I think. So the decision is
So all of those, the plan covers everything about the school, right? And so now, we need to look at, I I need to meet with her first and discuss that for
Before we get
Before we can, yes.
That's very fair for her to know what
What we're gonna be evaluating her on, yeah.
But I I need her to
It's a it's a good plan, though. Because the same, the same evaluation can be used for the if we change the organization. You know how her expectation, her expectations of her administrator matches. And that's what, that's what the proposed looks like. And I think, I think it's great. I think it's really a good way of, you know, because it covers everything. So I just wanna meet with her first.
So go back on the announcements. Sorry, um we move to uh, we move back to our regular session. Exit ad of the executive session. Thank you. Let's go.
So we're done. I I think it's the announcements, pre-service training, which begins on this Friday, August first. Um up to seventh, one day is allotted, one morning for Mister Joe Sanchez. I already reached out to him, so he has our schedule also. He will continue with our P D sessions once a month. He already has all the dates, but he will do the first one on August fifth, um the day that he chose.
Okay, August fifth for Joe?
Yes, and it's only in the morning. Um August first is general assembly, so we're going to the principals will go over the expectations and it's more of a structured um the structured form of the expectations for the teachers and we will be giving them the the schedule, the master's schedule. Um and then student parent orientation is on August eighth. Um this is a Friday, um morning, the first one is for the elementary and middle's um elementary and then the second one is for the secondary. First day of class is Monday, August eleventh.
August eleven. July, so in a week or so. Okay, thank you, C E O. Um before we go for an adjournment, we'll go on executive session. Can we go? Okay, thank you, CEO, um, before we go for an adjournment, we'll go on executive session, can we go?
That's the CEO's evaluation.
Adjournment in the back?
I still want to wait here.
No, no, because I need to.
Do you have anything to do?
Okay.
Hold on, Mr. And, hold on, CEO.
Are we talking to?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's already provided.
Madam, are we on executive session? We're, we're, we're being recorded, I just, I just wanna clarify.
Okay.
Yeah, real quick, on the executive session, we will, we'll, we'll wanna go back real quick on that and get out.
Okay, so I'll, I'll, I'll be out, can you please?
Okay.
Let me know, Ryan, Mister Ryan.
Ryan?
Is that right? Can you let me know?
We're gonna discuss something with the CEO, okay?
Recording stopped.